My name is Jack Wall and I'm the Chairman of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. Before we get started, I've asked Commissioner Costin to lead us in prayer, followed by Commissioner Quayar leading us in the pledge. Please stand.
Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this blessed day. God, we thank you for all the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We ask to God that you would continue to watch over this country and this great city in which we live. Now, God, as we come to deliberate and to make decisions, God, we ask that you would give us your wisdom and your direction and give us your will. We thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Redmond to introduce the members of the Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to start on this my-right side of the dais. That lady in the black mask is Kay Wilson. She is a deputy city attorney, and she is in charge of all things planning and land use and helps us out here each month. She also has another attorney that helps her with that, too. I don't see her, but Tori's not here. Next to her is Holly Quayar. She is a consultant, and she serves at large. Next to Holly, that handsome fellow over there, that's John Costin. He's a retired fire chief, captain?
Captain.
Captain, okay, thank you. Retired fire captain, and he serves at large. This is Robin Klein. Robin is a social worker, and she represents the Centerville District. My name's Dave Redmond. I'm a commercial real estate broker. I represent the Bayside District. This fellow is Don Horsley. He is a farmer, and he, too, serves at large. He's also our longest-tenured member. Right in the center there is Jack Wall. Jack is the chairman of the Planning Commission, and he is an engineer by profession. He represents the Rose Hall District. To Jack's left is our vice chairman, Mr. George Alcaraz. George does a whole bunch of things. He's a contractor. He's a restaurant owner. He's an events promoter. He's a planning commissioner, and he represents the Beach District. Did I leave anything out? No, okay. Dee Oliver sits next to George. Dee is a past chairman of our body and a past vice chairman. She serves at large. She's another one of those people with five jobs. She has, she's a funeral director and a restaurateur and an author and a mom and a number of other things, and she's served here, I think this is year nine.
Yes.
Year nine. David Weiner is sitting next to Dee. He, too, is a former chairman and vice chairman. He represents the Kempsville District, and he is a commercial salesman in the building industry. This is Whitney Graham's last meeting. We were saddened to learn this morning. That's that guy sitting next to Mr. Weiner. He represents, well, for a little while, the Lynnhaven District, and he is pressed for on a number of issues, so this will be his last meeting. He is a developer and manager of properties, and, as I said, for now represents the Lynnhaven District, and we will miss you, my friend.
Thank you.
Sitting next to him, David Bradley is a retired budget official for the City of Virginia Beach. Must be nice. He represents the Princess Anne District. And to his left is Bobby Tahan. Bobby is our planning director, and he's going to take a moment now and introduce these fine staff people who help him and help us.
Thank you, Commissioner Redmond. A clerk here today, we have Madison Harris, who is one of our new planning technicians, as well as Pam Sandloop. As far as city staff, we have our planning administration team, Carolyn Smith, Waddell, and Marshall Coleman, Michaela McKinney, and Elizabeth Nowak, as well as our zoning administrator Hannah Sabo, and Rick Lomen, our city traffic engineer as well.
I will say, before I turn things back to our chairman, we've, a number of new staff folks here today gave us some presentations this morning. They're all doing a wonderful job so far, and we appreciate it. If, you know, keep asking questions, because we'll be happy to...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you. Next, we've asked the clerk to describe the rules and order of business for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. We request that if you have a cellphone, to please put it on silent. Following is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of the rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission agenda. The order of business for this public hearing will be withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. The consent agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believes are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Today, we will have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first. Following the applicant or their representative, in-person speakers will be called next, and then the speakers participating via WebEx. Speakers in support or opposition of agenda item will have three minutes to speak, unless they are solely representing a large group, such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. For WebEx speakers, once your name is called, please pause for two to three seconds to begin, to ensure the commissioners hear your complete remarks. As only one audio feed can be open at a time, do not ask, "Can you hear me?" as you will not be able to hear a response. If a speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, we will move on to the next speaker or the next order of business. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next order of business is consideration of requests to withdraw or defer an item. Please come forward if you have any items to be withdrawn.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Wall. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is RJ Nutter. We represent item number one, Baker Road Properties, on your agenda, and have requested deferral for 30 days. We did notify the adjacent property owners in this case, so everyone was aware, so I'm not expecting anyone to be here. Okay?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So that was for deferral. Does anybody have any objection of this item to be deferred? Do I have a motion to defer agenda item number one for 30 days?
So moved.
Okay. And I have a second by...
Yes.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Redmond and a second by Mr. Horsley.
Okay, vote is open.
Are there any planning commissioners abstaining on these items to be deferred? Okay. Hearing none?
The vote is open, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
By recorded vote of 11 in favor, zero against, agenda item number one has been deferred for 30 days.
Okay, thank you. The next order of business is the consent agenda. I'm going to turn that over to the vice chair to run that portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hold on.
Mr. Chairman, just letting you know, we have a speaker now for items five and six, so that needs to have come off of consent.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, good. All right, Mr. Chair, thank you. So we now have seven items on consent agenda. These applications are recommended for approval by staff and the Planning Commission concurred, and there are no speakers that have signed up for opposition. First item, item number three, Daniel Good and Cynthia Schott from Bay Lake Lakes LLC. Please come forward. Afternoon. Can you please state your name for the record?
Cynthia Schott.
And do you accept all the conditions?
Yes.
Thank you. You may be seated. Is there any opposition to the item that was just called for item number three? Who's reading this one?
Me.
Ms. Oliver, may you please read this, sorry.
I will. This is an application requesting a conditional use permit for permanent tattoo parlor specifically for the application of permanent makeup known as microblading. It will be in an 872-square-foot suite of an existing commercial office building on the property zone B2, Community Business District. The applicant intends to operate a vocational school known as Advanced Permanent Makeup Institute that trains students in permanent makeup techniques. The business will have two employees, one permanent cosmetic tattoo artist and one permanent cosmetic tattoo instructor. The classes will have a maximum size of six students. Classes will be held from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and from 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. on Mondays and Wednesdays. The only proposed exterior changes accompanying this application will be an updated sign plate included on the existing building directory sign, and the sign plate will match the existing plate configurations, and lettering will display the business name. The staff was good with this application, and all the conditions were acceptable to the applicant, and therefore we have placed this on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. The next item for consent is item number four, and that is the Whitney Triplan Pass at 952 Timberlake Drive for a family daycare. Please come forward. Welcome. If you could state your name for the record, please?
My name is James Pass.
All right, do you accept the conditions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition for this item? All right, hearing none. If we could have Mr. Weiner.
Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a family daycare for up to 12 children. The single-family dwelling is located in Bellevue Manor Estates. Typical hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, with only one employee. The request for a conditional permit for family daycare is acceptable, and we find it some recommend approval and put it on consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item on consent agenda is item number seven, Tan Dang for a tattoo parlor at 1940 Laskin Road, Suite 311. Can I have a representative please come forward?
Um, no.
Is there any opposition? All right, having done, if I could have Ms. Quayar please speak on that.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit in order to operate a tattoo parlor specifically for permanent makeup known as microblading within a portion of an existing 1,200-square-foot salon. The unit is located within the Regency Hilltop Shopping Center alongside Laskin Road on property zone B2, Community Business District. Staff recommends approval of this application, and the commission agrees, therefore is on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item on consent is item number nine. That's the N3 Property Advisors LLC for Automobile Repair Garage at 6213 Indian River Road. Will representative please come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Chairman, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing the applicant. Mr. Royce Barrington with Strickland Brothers is here in attendance. We want to thank Michaela for her hard work on this application. All loving conditions as recommended by staff are acceptable to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, I ask Ms. Klein to please speak on this.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate an automobile repair garage on a 1.34-acre parcel zoned B2, Community Business District. The site is currently undeveloped, and the applicant is seeking to construct a 1,725-square-foot building. The auto repair business will provide drive-through, limited maintenance services such as oil changes, power steering, fluid service, and Virginia State inspections. All services to be provided are limited to those where customers can remain in their vehicles. It is anticipated that up to 50 cars will be serviced daily. Staff recommends approval, and the commission agrees.
Thank you. The next items for consent are items number 10 and 11 for CNC Development Company for short-term rental at 501 22nd Street, Units A and B. Is there representative?
Again, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing CNC Development. I want to thank Mr. Morrison for his work on this application. All 19 conditions as recommended are acceptable to my clients.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I ask Mr. Graham to please speak on this.
The applicant has submitted a conditional use permit request to operate two three-bedroom short-term rentals on the subject site. The property is currently being converted into two separate units for rental purposes. The property is located in the Oceanfront Resort District. Each unit will have three parking spaces to accommodate the three bedrooms in each unit. We are recommending approval of the application.
Thank you. And the last item on the consent agenda is item number 12 for Cynthia Langer for short-term rental at 2113 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 6C. Is there a representative here?
Mr. Alcaraz, Ms. Langer is virtual. Calling Cindy Langer, please pause two to three seconds, and then state your name, and if the conditions applied to your application are acceptable.
Hi, I'm Cindy Langer, and the conditions are acceptable.
Is there any opposition for this item being placed on the consent agenda? All right, Mr. Chair, as right, we have no more. Oh, sorry. Mr. Bradley, can you speak on this?
Yes, I'd be glad to. This is for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 2113 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 6C. The applicant is requesting to operate a short-term rental in a two-bedroom, 1,235-square-foot unit within a 15-unit condominium development located east of Atlantic Avenue. Currently, 13 of the 15 units are used as short-term rentals, and most have been operating in this manner without incident since the building was constructed in 1984. Being located east of Atlantic Avenue where the predominant use is hotel, the proposed short-term rental is compatible with the surrounding properties and would not have an adverse impact on residential neighborhoods. Plan and staff has recommended this, and Planning Commission agrees and wants to put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Chair, that was the last item on the consent agenda. The Planning Commission places the following applications on the consent agenda, items three, four, seven, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Okay, thank you. Do I have motion to approve by consent agenda items three, four, seven, nine, 10, 11, and 12?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve or consent items number three, four, seven, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Alcaraz and a second by Mr. Horsley?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, and, okay. Is there anyone wishing to abstain from these?
Mr. Chairman, while I will vote in favor of the consent agenda, I want to be clear that I am specifically abstaining on agenda items number 10, 11, and 12. I have a letter on file with the city attorney's office. I have a client in the travel business which prevents me from voting on either ordinances or on individual short-term rental applications. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Vote is open. By recorded vote of 11 in favor, zero against, agenda items three, four, seven, and nine have been approved, recommended for approval by consent. By recorded vote of 10 in favor, zero against, with one abstention by Mr. Redmond, agenda items number 10, 11, and 12 have been recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you. If you had an application that was on the consent agenda, your request will now be scheduled for an upcoming city council meeting. Staff will contact you about the date. For those applications on the consent agenda, thank you for your participation, and you may remain in the meeting, either virtually or in person, but you're free to leave. So we'll give those individuals a few minutes. Okay, thank you. The next order of business is the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, are we ready for the first agenda item?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Our first agenda item is agenda item number two, NMP C4 Fairfield Shopping Center LLC, an application for a conditional use permit mini warehouse on property located at 5312 Fairfield Shopping Center in District 3, formerly the Kempsville District.
Thank you, Pam. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you. My name is RJ Nutter. I represent the applicant. Let me tell you a little bit about this before we get going on the specific application. This is part of the Fairfield Shopping Center, which has gone under new ownership, and has gone under a number of large changes at the shopping center. It had fallen on bad times, quite frankly, a number of years ago. The previous owners had refinanced just prior to around 2008, and frankly, what happened with the downturn at that time, they had taken all the money out, and the shopping center was in somewhat of a distressed situation. It was taken back and purchased by my client a few years ago. Since that time, they've been repairing, putting on new roofs, putting in new sidewalks, looking at new signage applications for the properties, and also looking at major changes at the center. All the time this is going on, the retail industry has gone through quite a bit of a shock, as we all know, and so the amount of retail that's actually occurring at this shopping center will be reduced in addition to what's going on with this application. So one of you asked, I think it was David, you asked, one of the buildings will be torn down. I know, I think it was Mr. Wall, it was you, and one of the buildings you pointed out is being torn down and replaced with some two or three outparcels in the front instead of the long line. Now, I turn to this application, which I want to begin by thanking. Elizabeth Nowak she did a terrific job working with us, answering every question that you could possibly think of in a shopping center application. But at any rate, in this case, one of the things they're doing is they're relocating where the retail is located. Much of the retail is located along all three major highways, Lord Dunmore, Providence, and Independence Boulevard. What they're doing here along Lord Dunmore, which is largely a residential street, is taking away about 20,000 square foot of retail and putting in place a use that has a very, very low impact on areas around it, namely a self-contained, self-storage facility. So, in that effect, is we lose about 20,000 square feet of retail and put in a low-intensity use like this. As your staff reports indicates, even with the high numbers of assumed traffic we have, and I don't know if you looked at that number, Mr. Whitney, but I would tell you that even if it's 173 trips a day, which I've never seen in a self-storage facility, there's still a reduction by 80% of the number of traffic that would go to this side of the property. So it's a significant reduction in the traffic, significant reduction in amount of activity that would occur on this property in lieu of the large number of retail spaces that it's replacing. Now, we started meeting with the president, the current president of Civic League and the previous president of Civic League way at the beginning of this, before the signs got posted, to look at the location of this, talk about issues and so forth, and also to brief them on the overall changes that were occurring at the shopping center, which were of great concern and interest to them. So if I could, let me go to the elevations, if I could, for a second, and show you the building, because the building, everybody agrees, is quite striking. It's very attractive. It's very contemporary-looking. And among the issues we pointed out to them was that the bulk of the building is, in fact, the bulk of the building except for right here, is at about 35 feet in height, which is the normal height requirement for residential. As you know, with this property zone B2, we're separated by a major street from any residential, so there is no height restriction in this district whatsoever. But nonetheless, we tried to keep it around 35 feet right along here and here and here, and the corner piece is higher, just as an accent piece, so it adds attractiveness to the center. This is an unoccupied building in large measure, except for the office area, so there's no one looking down on anybody here. It's strictly a self-storage facility entirely. Now, one of the concerns raised was, well, look, what about, you know, some people in the neighborhood were concerned about height, even though there's no height restriction. So they said, perhaps if you can soften this area with additional landscaping. Pardon me. One of the things we were doing was eliminating an accessway here and putting in landscaping. With the revised plan I submitted this morning, we're taking out a total of, I think it's eight other parking spaces here, so the total of about 110 feet of landscape feature across the front of the building. Very unique, and I think perfect for this area because Lord Dunmore is largely back here a residential street, and so I think it'll be a nice softening for that area. Another concern they had was, had to do with the signage, and we had a large sign, lighted sign, that was here facing Lord Dunmore, and there was concern that that bright light might still affect residents across the street. So we agreed, we've not put a lighted sign here. We've moved the lighted sign here facing, this actually faces Providence Road. It's a bit of a distance, but it's still, you'll be able to see it from Providence Road. So that's where the lighted sign will be, and it'll be, any signage on this side will be unlighted to avoid any problem with the residents across the street. And by the way, we're set back 55 feet, and Lord Dunmore is an 80-foot right away, so we're about 135 feet from the closest residential property lot. The other concern was staff raised, we originally had loading on this side of the building. We agreed to relocate the loading area to the rear of the building, so that would be really no visibility to residents anywhere around it, so the loading would take place strictly in the rear of the building at these locations. A concern was to make sure this was a one-way alleyway, and this is a bit of a difference between us and the Civic League president at this point. We have traffic coming in here, truck traffic, that is, coming at this location, partially because this alley accessway serves a number of other uses, so trucks come in and out of this facility all the time because there's loading back here to the other buildings along the center. So we propose our trucks for the loading into the building would come in here. There'd be a one-way alley here. We put in a sign here indicating the caution when you're coming out, and second, we put in a speed bump here to prevent people from just rolling right out of there to prevent any safety problems, and they would exit here. Now, otherwise, people coming just for a residential vehicle or typical normal vehicle can park and enter any way they wish to, just like part of the center. But we agreed to that. We agreed to the widening of it here. We agreed to relocating the sign here to ameliorate some of the concerns being raised. So we've tried to address those concerns for everyone, but otherwise, we think it's a great use. It's a reduction in terms of traffic, a reduction in terms of activity on this side of the center while we relocate the new residential, I'm sorry, the new commercial properties over on Independence and Providence Roads. But I'm happy to answer the questions you might have. I think I've hit all the new conditions we've agreed to. The ones that Elizabeth passed out are acceptable, so I want to make sure we've captured everything in this process for you. I want to thank, by the way, Dr. Ripert. She's done a really good job representing her Civic League. She's had to field a lot of emails, I expect. There are 700 homes in Fairfield, and so a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, so she's, would actually research them in terms of there was concern about crime. She said she checked with the police department. No evidence of crime at these facilities, and so forth. So I think she's done a really good job. So, anyway, I know she's going to speak at some point here today, so I'll let her speak for herself, but any... for herself, but I'm happy to answer any questions any of the commission members might have.
Okay, are there any questions?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Wall.
All right, thank you. Are there any speakers signed up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have two speakers. First will be Kelly Ripert, followed by Paul Rakowski.
Hello.
Hello. Please state your name for the record.
My name's Dr. Kelly Ripert, and I'm the president of the Fairfield Neighborhood Civic League.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to follow up on what Mr. Nutter said, and we have been working with them on this project and this proposal. We've met in person, on Zoom. We were even emailing at 6 o'clock last night after dinner. And I, as the neighborhood representative, have spread the information and the proposal out to the Civic League, over 700 homes, via email and social media, word of mouth, as best as I can, so that neighbors are aware and that they can share any concerns and point out any things that we haven't considered in this proposal. So today, I'm going to present, really, both sides. The majority of the neighbors are in favor of the facility, but they have concerns and would like the council to consider some of the wording in the proposal. So the people who are 100% against the facility note that nobody wants an internal air-temperature-controlled storage facility near their neighborhood. It doesn't add anything to the neighborhood. It's not a place for community. It's not a resident, it's not, not a restaurant, a restaurant, I mean. It's not a place we can shop at, so it doesn't add anything to the community. Another thing to consider is that the shopping center for over 30 years has been one-story. And there's a house that's less than 200 feet that looks at this one-story currently shopping center. And building a three-story taller than the entire shopping center seems to be an eyesore and might lower property values, and that is a concern because there's about 30 homes at the front of the neighborhood who would be driving past this and be able to see it from some part of their house. A third thing that neighbors who are opposed have mentioned is the traffic. So Lord Dunmore Drive has long been a cut-through, and we've worked with the city to help reduce the cut-through traffic. That's including adding speed bumps, stop signs. Recently, they narrowed Lord Dunmore Road by putting double yellow lines and permanent parking spots, no through traffic, or no through truck signs, excuse me, and also adding a brake in the median on Lord Dunmore Drive. So trucks coming in and out from behind the shopping center now cannot go left. There's a brake in the shopping center median, and they can turn, excuse me, they can't go right. They can go left back out toward Providence Road, so that we don't have big trucks coming down through our neighborhood anymore. So these are all valid concerns, and the people who are more supportive of this proposal and have sent me, you know, this looks a lot better than what I anticipated, because it is a very pretty, kind of looks like an office building, doesn't look like a three-story brick wall like you would think, have shared, they have kind of three concerns that they'd liked the commission and the planners to really address. The first thing being, in the proposal, it states that there'll be no long-term overnight motorized parking. We learned with the current Fairfield storage facility located behind this facility that people would still park pods and things that are non-motorized in the parking spots. And so neighbors feel like part of this proposal should strictly say, that should be revised, to say that there is no long-term parking at all of anything, no long-term outside storage. This seems fair, considering that the parking spots are less than 150 feet from someone's front door, and we wouldn't want RVs and things parked in front of your house in a normal situation. The second thing, and this is the one thing we do disagree on, is the flow of traffic inside and outside of the storage facility. So right now, like I said, we have the big trucks coming out from behind the shopping center. They cannot make a right. They go left on Lord Dunmore. And we feel that all traffic flowing in here into the loading zone should flow in through the front of the shopping center and out through the back, just like the trucks are now. A stop sign should be added, and then they will not go right down Lord Dunmore Drive. They can make the left because there's the brake in the median. It clearly says no trucks, and it clearly says no right-hand turn. I feel strongly that this should be done because of safety. The building next to this proposal is DBAT, which is a baseball indoor batting cage area. They run camps in the summer, all the breaks. Large groups of kids are here and walking. Currently, it's a parking lot where they're parking, so they don't have to cross streets and deal with trucks to get into the front of DBAT. But once this is built, it will push parking out across the street. So people coming out, if they come out the front of the shopping center or the truck, are going to have two walls up here, and as they pull forward, they're going to have to nose pretty far out before they can look and see any children, and we worry that it's an accident waiting to happen. So we could eliminate this by requesting they come in through the front where they can clearly see where people are walking, and exit out the back where the rest of the trucks are exiting. The last point here is, since we're pushing all pedestrians into the parking lot across the street, we would ask that they put better crosswalks that are clearly marked for everybody, driving and walking, and that the current speed bumps that are there in front of DBAT would need to be altered and made larger, maybe the more speed-table kind, to help the trucks coming in and out slow down, because it's not usual that trucks would be in front, but now they will be. And so as a Civic League, we generally really like what has been proposed, and we've enjoyed working with the planners and coming up with something that would work. We think it's visually appealing, and it would be more quiet than restaurants and not add to the continuing failing commercial industry. No one wants to look at an empty, dilapidated shopping center. So we feel because of those reasons that it's acceptable, but would like them to consider no outside storage at all, flow into the shopping center in a normal way and out like the other trucks do, and the safety of all of the children and walkers that will be now crossing over to enter into DBAT. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the speaker?
Question. Well, before we go and ask staff a question, because I've had some phone calls about
I'm sure you
outside people, people parking overnight in containers, and that cannot be done with this conditional use permit because it's an inside storage facility. Isn't that correct? That's not part of this conditional use permit?
That is correct. They're not requesting a bulk storage. That would be considered a bulk storage yard and require an additional conditional use permit. They are not getting that.
Good, thank you.
That's not going to be able to happen. About the other things, we'll talk with the representative.
Okay.
See what he has to say.
Thank you so much.
Okay, are there any other questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Paul Rakowski.
Afternoon, members of the planning board. Our Civic League president just cut my presentation probably in half.
Could you state your name for the
Yes, I'm sorry. Paul Rakowski. I am a resident of Fairfield. Lived there over 35 years. I actually live in the houses right across the street from the shopping center. So as a resident, I think I have a better view and background on what the traffic load is there. I am a professional engineer in Virginia. I'm here representing myself. As the Civic League president has mentioned, the key issue for me is the safety of traffic flow, and I believe, and I'm very grateful for the developer for working with the Civic League, it's highly unusual. Developer and the property owner should be commended for that. It's the flow of traffic in and out of the loading area, as the Civic League president mentioned, east side of the building. It's right adjacent, slammed against DBAT. And you heard the Civic League president tell you about the amount of children and other people that use DBAT, and also even from the neighborhood that walk across to try to get into the shopping center from the Fairfield neighborhood. I believe the proposal that Kelly, Civic League, presented to you is exactly spot-on. I can tell you that even today, semi-trucks still use the main entrance on that side off of Lord Dunmore to get to the shopping center. It's much more convenient. Most people use that. I guarantee you, anyone using a storage facility is going to use that main entrance. So that means they're going to come in along the north, excuse me, the south side of the building, which is the main entrance to the shopping center off of Lord Dunmore. I fully agree, as an engineer, the best thing would be is to make it one-way, and that they go in through DBAT to the north and exit out to south. There's a 50-foot-wide area behind this proposed north area of the building that exits onto Lord Dunmore with the left-hand turn, and that would drive the traffic back up Lord Dunmore and away from the Fairfield Shopping Center. In consideration, I appreciate that you would look into this with the developer before approving or constructing this facility. Once again, I want to thank you for your time today, your patience, listening to me, and I just cut this thing at least in half, but thank you so much. Any questions?
Are there any questions for the speaker?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No more speakers.
Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come up and speak?
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the speakers for coming. As I indicated, they live there, they respect their neighborhood, and so do we. Couple of things, if I could. I do think we think this project brings some useful life to the neighborhood. By that, I mean, a lot of people who live close to self-storage facilities use self-storage facilities. Businesses within this center will likely use these self-storage facilities, so we think it adds a benefit. But there are particular questions about no outdoor storage, no long-term storage of vehicles out there. That's fine. I think your staff's already addressed it anyway. I think it's number eight in the conditions, but we don't have trucks out there, don't want trucks out there. The speed bump issue, we're happy to take a look at. I mean, that's kind of a long-term issue. It doesn't really affect the application, per se, but we're happy to sit down with the Civic League and take a look at that. The one-way issue is perplexing. I am not an expert on either, which way to go in when I'm loading a truck, or for that matter, the safety of the children around it. But I can tell you, we both share the same thing. The applicant doesn't want an unsafe circumstance any more than the neighborhood does. So what I might suggest, we believe entering, the trucks entering this way makes more sense, only because that's where trucks enter today.
Mr. Nutter, excuse me one second. Jack, if you don't mind, can we switch the view to where it shows the site plan and the streets?
Before you do, can I show you that, because, only because I want to show you where this is the main truck access today is behind the center, but beyond that, probably that's fine, if you want to go back to the other one. To the, there we go.
Okay, and so if I'm understanding you correctly, to the left side of the building is the back?
The back of that center.
Is right that way?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, please.
Yes, okay. And so, and this is kind of, and we're closing this one off, and this will become kind of revamped, nicer, new accessway. Existing today, just not as nice as it will be. So we were trying to keep this for vehicle traffic, so that, quite frankly, we felt like if we put vehicle traffic and truck traffic here, there'd be a conflict between cars coming in and out. In addition, if we come here, they have to turn right, excuse me, to left, and cross traffic, which can be more dangerous. So we felt like if trucks come in this way, where there's really very little vehicular traffic and more truck traffic, go this way and just take a left out with a speed bump here to stop them, we felt like that was a safer approach. And so what we'd like to suggest is this, we'd like to start out with this scenario, where it comes in this direction. I don't think this should be necessarily a condition of the use permit, to be honest with you, but I do want to address it. Maybe we start out with this and see if this causes any problems, the last thing we want is a safety problem in the center, in which case we can reverse it and go that way, because the alley can only attack, the alley behind can only address traffic one way or the other. So it's a question of which way you go. But I don't know how to address the issue, other than to say that we don't want a safety problem here anymore that they do. We just think this is a safer approach for those people and for other traffic coming in out of the center than if we put the trucks in the main road. There you have it. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Wiener.
Go ahead. But what you said, they're coming out, the way you're talking about there is coming, going
Come on here, come on here.
Coming from the backside. When the trucks pull out, the vehicles pull out from the self-storage facility, I don't see what's blocking, I mean, they're going to be right there, the back cage is going to be next to it, there's nothing blocking them from seeing people coming from the batting cage, correct?
That's correct. In fact, we put a speed bump here, so they
You put a speed bump there, according to your new elevated site plan.
Yes, sir.
So Dave, there's, the shopping center across the street where the Kroger is has something, has one of these turns, and you have the buildings on either side of you, and you have to inch out
I would think.
Super slowly, because people cross the street, there's cars that coming in.
I'm agreeing with it. I know what you're talking about.
Right, so I feel very conflicted, because I absolutely hear the concern of the Civic League. I agree, it's probably better for traffic flow in general, but I would, like, the left turn, less safe, but still safer than trying to inch out of that spot.
Well, the only reason this is different from what, well, no, because there's still sidewalks over there, what you're talking about, between the two buildings. But I do, what Mr. Nutter's talking about, because there's only one way in, back, on the backside of the building.
Right.
When trucks, when the delivery trucks and food line and everything come out of that building, they can only come out onto Lord Dunmore, make a left, because that's the way the curbs meant. And I just don't, and, I mean, when he's talking about the new, or the entrance and exit, going in that way and turning in in front of cars there, I think that, in my opinion, I think that is going to clog things up more, be a little bit more dangerous.
But what kind of delivery trucks are we talking about? Like this
These are only people moving in with U-Hauls.
Right.
It could be a car.
So it's a car, it's a 20-foot truck. It's not an 18-wheeler
Yeah.
That's coming to offload groceries.
We just think it, this is, this is where the trucks come in today, we just think this is a little safer, that's all. It's a difference in opinion of what's the safest between the two.
A person like this, just grabbing on there, you're going to say some
I would say that if there's a problem, we'd be, and we would revert, we'd talk to the Civic League about it and come back, but that's why I don't want it necessarily as a condition which way we go, so we can address this in the future as well. But we would like to start out with coming in this way, just because that's where the truck traffic comes in today.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. Yes, sir.
Let's see, but then there's some other points about, were you finished? I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, I was. I thought I just
The no right turn on Lord Dunmore, if I understood that right, that currently the traffic on the, coming from the business on the backside of the building, they're forced to turn back left
They have to go, right, they have to come out and come this way. Yes, sir.
That's where everything that's coming out of that
And that's an existing condition, Mr. Paul.
But they're, they're supposed to make a left turn on the
Yes, sir, they make a left. And so we'd be coming in, making a right, so without crossing traffic.
Going out, if we maintain, matter, that's, to make a left turn at that entrance and exit on the right side. So that's an existing condition in the
Yes, sir. Because that neighborhood did not want truck traffic going through the neighborhood.
The city made that. Trucks would not, delivery trucks would not
That's for the delivery trucks, right, but that's, that's on the backside, though.
Yeah, but that's on, that's out on the road on Lord Dunmore. That has to do with the city, not the shopping center.
The trucks, so trucks being U-Hauls would be requested to
Well, they'd have to do the same thing.
They'd have to do the same thing.
No, but even a car, even a car coming out there, you can't make a right. You can only make a left.
You can only make a left, though.
Yes.
Okay.
But I think we addressed all of her, the ones that she said others were concerned about, but otherwise, I had, again, the no outdoor storage, the one-way alley issue, and the speed bump issue.
And the better crosswalks?
The better crosswalk, the speed bumps, I think, yeah. We're going to have to work with them, it's really not part of the application, but we'll be happy to sit down with Civic League. New owners, new perspective, so forth. But otherwise, the conditions are acceptable. And I think number eight does address Your position, Kelly? A no outdoor storage, is that right? Is that impressive?
Yeah. Go ahead.
No, eight, I just looked at eight, and I just turned the page. It says something about no motorized
No motorized storage vehicles.
Outside storage of motorized vehicles, but it didn't say anything about, like, container
Trucks. If you want to put trucks
And I, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think that just by ordinance, they can't do it. It's not like we have
Right, okay, then that's all we had. I just didn't see it, so I'm not
That's okay.
I should, I should mention that around the city, I'm noticing that maybe
I should mention that around the city, I'm noticing that may be one of the most violated things I see. Walking into all kinds of environments, and there's these two big containers sitting at the edge of a shopping center, thinking to myself, well, there's certainly no permit for this thing. And that's not casting any aspersions on this applicant or your application. We just need to keep a better eye on that sort of thing. We tend not to enforce a lot around here sometimes. Sorry.
Yeah.
Good enough. Thank you.
Yeah. No objection to those at all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Okay, we're going to close it for questions and open it up to the planning commission. To make a motion or to carry on discussion?
I didn't want to, I wanted to wait till we got to discussion before discussing, while Mr. Nutter finishes his work. No, you're good. See, with regard to the issues that we just raised, look, loading and unloading, there isn't a perfect way. I mean, there just isn't a perfect way to do that. And I think we're really kind of down to real fine distinctions in this. I accept, I think, what they have to say here. I understand these folks' concern. But I think it's adequately addressed in the application. And I completely accept what Mr. Nutter says. If there were a problem with safety, or with circulation, or with conflicts with other tenants, or other tenants' patrons, they're going to be the first ones to want to try and fix it, because it would seriously impact the viability of this new element to the shopping center. With regard to that new element to the shopping center, it seems to me it's a huge improvement. I mean, this end of the shopping center is a restaurant, didn't support what was there to begin with. And so, I mean, in lots of instances like this around the city, we ought to be looking for high-quality redevelopment opportunities that add value. And this appears to me to be a high-quality redevelopment opportunity that adds value, and done in a particularly attractive manner, and sounds like with a fair amount of care. So I do think it's an entirely appropriate application. Again, with regard to the loading, I mean, I accept what's been presented. I could sit down and draw one up. I don't know there would be any better or worse, or any of us could. So I do think this is a fine application, and I'll support it. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Klein?
So I'm a little less optimistic in terms of what will happen after the applications move forward. I don't see, and please correct me, staff, there's nothing in the conditions about the direction of traffic? Is that correct? Yes. Okay. So in theory, if I'm using the storage unit, I could use the first entrance to go in and then, but the alleyway itself would be one-way, so I would essentially, I would not be able to go into the loading area that way. I'd have to pull into the main entrance and then make a left and go around the back of the building.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Is the loading area wide enough so that it doesn't have to be one-way? It's too narrow.
That's what Mr. Nutter said.
No, it's one, it's singular vehicle.
They asked that it be one-way to avoid traffic. They didn't want too much traffic.
To avoid traffic down that way.
Based on the dimensions shown on here, the loading area, with the loading area being cut out and the drive aisle that's left, it is only enough, wide enough for one-way.
Okay. Yeah. I, I don't know that it's reason to deny the application, but I take issue with the safety concern of going between the buildings. Absolutely.
You mean in the, in the direction that it's-
In the current traffic flow.
Path with the, with the baseball, or with the batting cage.
Yeah, I mean, I don't like it on regular shopping centers, but the fact that there is such a high volume of kids there, who don't know that they're not supposed to run in the street, even when they do, the, just the crossing. And you have to inch, I hate getting stuck between them, because you have to inch out, whether it be a grown-up or a child. And inevitably, someone still gets surprised to see you there.
Mr. Weiner?
I think Mr. Redmond hit it on the head. There's no way of, well, there's really no way of determining right now until it gets built. I think the owner's going to be on top of things and going to be, if there's a safety issue, I think they're going to jump on right away. They're spending a lot of money on this shopping center redoing this, and they're not just building on this side, they're building on Kempstall roadside also. They're building new shops over there, too. So they're spending a ton of money on this. I'm inclined to support it like the way it is, just sitting here looking at it. I used to take my daughter to the batting cage when she played softball. There's a lot more, there's older kids in there at that place than younger at the softball and baseball thing. I don't think anybody's going to run out in the street. My opinion. And again, you can have accidents anywhere you go. You can't get out of that. So I'm going to support it the way it is. I like it the way it is.
Mr. Jahan, if the application gets approved as written and there ends up being an issue that the community notices, is that something that they would contact the planning office for?
When you say issue, what do you mean?
So let's say that the application is approved as written, and six months from now, the residents notice that there's an increase of near misses coming out of that alleyway.
So this is, this is internal to the shopping center. It's not a direct impact to city infrastructure that where we would be able to influence that outcome. So right now, the layout shows a one-way, wide enough for one-way. It does not say which way the one-way is going right now. So it could be in the discussions, through the site plan review process, that they decide which direction that they're going to go in. However, that being said, there isn't, it would be, as noted, it would be in the best interest of the property owner to assure that his tenants and their clients are safe when they attend the location.
Okay. But if, for whatever reason, something about it doesn't work, it's an internal issue with the property owner. Okay.
Mrs. Klein, I'll tell you, say one thing. You probably have one of the strongest Civic Leagues in the city, Fairfield. And they are going to be on top of it. Then I'm sure they'll communicate with the owner of the shopping center if there's a problem. They do now, so I'm sure they will then.
And I commend the applicant for working with the, I mean, that's, again, we don't, we don't see a lot of that.
Anybody else?
If not, I'll make a motion. I would like to make a motion to approve with a couple of changes in the conditions. Condition number three, with the exception of no illuminated building sign shall be permitted on the west elevation of the structure. And the front additional green space is up to 110 linear feet. Is that correct way to do that?
Would you mind repeating that? I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. The first condition, condition number three, which is, that was given to us with an addition that says, with the exception of no illuminated building sign shall be permitted on the west elevation of the structure. And under the landscaping, under number two, to add the front green space to be up to 110 linear feet long instead of the shorter one. I don't have the linear footage of the first one.
I would probably recommend to say 110 linear feet long, as denoted on the conceptual plan.
Okay. 110 linear feet long, it's noted on the conceptual plan.
Okay. I have a motion for approval with the modified condition number two for 110 linear feet, as denoted on the modified site plan.
Second.
And I have a second. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Weiner with a modified-
I'll say it. Mr. Redmond?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
I was about to throw something at you. All right, thank you. You're doing your job. I should note, I am an independent contractor with a real estate company. Another independent contractor with my real estate company is a leasing agent for this property. I don't have anything to do with it. I haven't been there in years. And don't receive any remuneration or anything of that sort. So I'm part of that class of folks. Nonetheless, I make that disclosure. I do not yet have a letter on file, but will, with the city's attorney's office, because it just occurred to me this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other abstentions? Okay. All right, I have a motion of approval by Mr. Weiner and a second by Ms. Oliver for, with amended condition number two, 110 linear feet, as noted on the amended site plan. And then number three, with the addition of, with the exception that no illuminated building sign shall be permitted on the west elevation of the structure.
Was that an abstention by Mr. Weiner or declaration?
I-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was a disclosure.
Thank you.
Disclosure.
Okay, vote is open. A reported vote of 11 in favor, zero against. Agenda item number two has been recommended for approval with modifications to conditions two and three.
One more.
One more, two more.
Oh, two more.
Two more. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, our next agenda item, agenda items five and six, 1252 Jensen LLC, applications for a conditional use permit, bulk storage yard, and a modification of proffers on property located at 1252 Jensen Drive and a portion of 1228 Jensen Drive in District Six, formerly the Beach District. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative please come to the podium?
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. My name's Scott Prunty. I am the owner of 1252 Jensen LLC and proposing the build. To be, to be brief, in the description of everything. What's that?
Good luck. We have trouble with pointers here.
That's better than good luck with the proposal.
We can advance the glass.
I don't know.
Oh, boy, here we go. So we are in the blue highlighted area here, vacant land. It was a combination of residential property and industrial use. Back in 2006, it was approved to be built on with a multitude of flex space. Here is the existing elevations that were approved in 2006, with just shy of 30,000 square feet of building on it. And then a drive-through from Bird Neck, which is on the east side, the right side of these photos, to the left is the end of Jensen Drive. Oh.
That's what we're this whole time.
Thank you. So our proposal here is to bring in a 55, or 5,400-square-foot warehouse building, and then a 5,600-square-foot warehouse building, and a bulk outdoor storage area as the main use for this property. There'll be parking lots on the east side, which will be mainly employee parking and any customer parking. And then the interior parking lot will be shielded with fencing for company vehicles to be stored on beside the bulk outdoor storage area. The building to the left will be a small warehouse. Here's 3D rendering. The building at the front is to be used by a company that I also own, Solid Structures, an outdoor living design-build company. The outdoor storage space is a store, fiberglass pool shells, fencing, things like that. That'll all be enclosed with at least a six-foot solid privacy fence around it, so the neighbors will not see that. Just a couple more renderings of it. The front entrance on the top left, if you're looking in from Bird Neck, and then below it, kind of the southeast view, looking at it, the bottom right corner would be from Beautiful Street, so anybody on the residential side looking towards the building, you wouldn't see anything that was being stored in the yard, because the fence would be taller than it. The evergreen trees would actually be the forested trees that are existing on the property now. And then the top is the building all the way to the west of 5,600 square foot. Could you go to the next slide, please? Is that everything? Any questions?
Are there any questions for the applicant? I've got a few things. So just recently, it changed the bulk storage yard to gravel. So why is, it was, I think, just going to be turf?
It was going to be turf, and under city's request to have the bulk storage yard stabilized, they wanted at least gravel put down, and we agreed to that. That's also going to change. We have some stormwater in these plans. We will have to increase stormwater management, because that is considered impervious surface.
Okay. Yeah, I was out there. It's fairly, fairly soft ground. I'm sure during the drier months, you know, the warmer months, it's not quite as soft. But I mean, you try to move, you know, anything now, it's, it'd probably track mud on and off the-
Correct. It hasn't, it hasn't been dry for a couple of months out there right now, so. And with our stormwater management plans, we are going to move everything currently now into the storm system on Bird Neck side, because Jensen Drive area has hit capacity for what it can hold, so we've been working with the engineers on that.
So everything is going to Bird Neck? Is that?
Everything's going to go to Bird Neck. We're going to have underground storage, so we're putting permeable pavers in, bulk storage under any solid surface, so that we can capture most of that water, try to have it dissipate back down into the earth before it ever hit overflow that would take it out to any of the existing drainage.
So your sites are probably going to have to come up in order to put the storage under the-
Initial, initial born reports that we did on both the east and the west side, we have substantial area without bringing the property up any. The property is lower than the surrounding areas, but we also want to be mindful of our neighbors, that we don't come up so high, we push water onto their properties.
Okay. So describe a little bit about that category to landscape screening, 25-foot vegetated buffer, what your plans are.
So right now, if I can, right about here, the forest ends that's on the south side of the property, so it's heavily forested. So everything to the west, that's going to include this area, is going to remain the existing trees that are there. So there's 30-year-old plus trees on the property with the lower-level shrubbery. As we get to the front section here and along the north side, there's residence here and church here. We're going to work with both the church and the resident on the north side to provide landscaping that they're both comfortable with, and that's appealing for Bird Neck Road.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We have one speaker, Kevin Lewis.
My name is Kevin Lewis, and I live on Beautiful Street. And we have a problem, we have a problem with flooding on our street. And Jensen Drive does not have any drainage. And the roofs, the commercial roofs are actually pitched towards our backyards. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that's being taken care of.
May I ask, what, so there's no building on this site? What building are you talking about?
I live in a house, but there's commercial buildings that are existing, and their roofs are pitched towards our yard.
An existing building down the road on Jensen? Not on this site?
Can you call us that?
If, well, our, my backyard is backed up to the Jensen.
Do you have an aerial view? There we go.
It floods our street out, is all there was.
Can you see on there?
Your house?
You can use a pointer on this thing.
On the one right there about Beautiful Street.
There's a pointer on the podium right here, sir.
Right where it says Beautiful? Is that where your house is?
Yeah, right there before that, like, section of where, I'm the second to our last house. But all that floods out, like, I mean, I've called the city out there. I've been on that street. On the street itself, there's no drainage. And there's no, there was supposed to be a ditch or something put in back there, and it was not put in. And their roofs to the buildings are pitched towards our backyards, and they got hoses off their gutters that push to our back fence, and it floods us out. I mean, I've seen it where, when I first moved in, seven years ago, where the house down the street had six inches of water in it because of it. It's been, it's been an issue, and I've been trying to talk to people about it. I've called the city, I've called whoever, and nobody's done nothing. They came out, they didn't look at it. One guy did, and said, somebody overlooked it and didn't notice it.
Sir, can you step up a little bit, because we can't hear you.
If you can talk into the mic, it's hard for us to hear you.
Yeah, I called the city and had them come out there, and I guess, because there's no drainage on the street with asphalt, and roofs are pitched, like I said, and it just floods us out every rain we get. I've already had to- I've already had to replace things in my shed because it floods my shed out with two inches, three inches of rain. And I've actually built my backyard up to try to help stop it because it's been so bad.
Do you have, um, is there, is there a ditch?
There's no ditch.
Is there a ditch on, on Beautiful Street at all?
The ditch, on our street, there's a ditch, yes. But there's a, all our drainage runs to the ditch at the back of the street. So, you got a road over there and commercial bunks with their roofs pitched to our, and they're, they got their gutters on the back, which, with big black hoses that run to our fence, that all rushes to our backyards and it floods us out. And, I mean, and, you know, it's historical, a lot of older people out there and they didn't understand what was going on. And, you know, I'm sure there's been a lot of insurance claims throughout the years and nobody could come up with an explanation for it.
Okay.
So, I'm familiar with Jensen Drive. There's a BNP on the top left for Jensen Drive. It's a pretty good-sized lake. I don't know how, why it's not getting to that.
Some of that little pond they got?
Yeah, there's a pond there and there's another pond on the other side.
Oh, that a lake?
There's a pond on the other side, too. There's two. There's two.
Yeah, I know, I've been over, I've done work over on it. I'm familiar with the street, so, but yeah, that doesn't, like, you got commercial roofs, you know, they're pitched, you know, towards our backyards with gutters on the back of their buildings, along with all that rain and all that stuff coming from where they're planning on building. And, you know, just the right, what they got now, it floods us out. And this has been going on for a long time. I mean, there's a lot of old people out there and they don't know who, what they can do, you know?
Right.
So, I mean, I just figured, just come speak up on it and see if maybe there's something we can do because nobody's done nothing. And I've been calling for the past, I said, six years since I've been, seven years since I've been living there.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Lewis, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Our city has new water restrictions for all new developments, okay, and rezoning. And these people are going to have to comply with that. I'm not going to say it's going to help 100%, but we have learned in the past, when the new developments build and the rezonings, they have to follow these water restrictions, it's going to help in that aspect. But I, I don't really, I'm not really comprehending where you are.
I am.
To this. I know, I know what street you're on, but I don't know, you're right behind, you're right behind those buildings where it says Beautiful Street?
Yeah, I'm the, I'm the second to last house on.
Okay.
Towards the court and there's no drainage on the road either, so.
This development here has to meet some pretty sturdy water restrictions to be built, okay? Anything to be built there. So, this isn't going to make it worse. Maybe you could get with some staff members here before you leave and see about getting what we can do to help you out and then on your street, something or other.
All right, well, yeah, hopefully they figure something out because there's no drainage. I know there should have been and somebody didn't do their job when they built it, you know, I mean.
It's been back there for a long time.
Oh, I know. They got the pipes, the pipes are sitting back there for the drainage and it wasn't done. Like I said, there's a lot of older people, a lot of old people passed away throughout the years. And, you know, they were just old and they didn't know what was going on. So, I mean, obviously, I'm probably not the only one that knows about it now, but.
Sure.
I just want to make sure, you know.
Okay.
So, Mr. Lewis, sorry, I did look back there. You know, I walked back there and I did look at those buildings. So, yeah, I would probably agree with you that.
I mean, they got a roof pitched towards our backyard.
So, that's, so there's an existing problem, it appears. But, Mr. Ton, is there anybody on, on staff that could talk with Mr. Lewis after?
We'll need to take a look at it. I'm, I'm trying to pull up some information right now about those structures that were constructed and when they were built and if they were, what ordinance they were built under. We can get your contact information and we'll make sure to reach out to you to see what's going on. Depending on the age of it, it may be something that the city can't inject themselves in. It's just someone doing something unlawful to put water onto somebody else. But, we need to take a look at it, so I, I need to get more information.
Because there are two things here. One thing is the existing problem, which, you know, hopefully we can get that addressed. But then, the proposed application, which, you know, I think Mr. Weiner, you know, hopefully he made it clear that, you know, the site approval process is very rigorous at this point.
Yeah, just don't want to make things worse than what it already, I mean, we're already having the issue and the building is going to probably make it worse, in my opinion, but.
Well, I hope not. There's a buffer there that would hopefully buffer that, not only the.
Plus, pretty good back there. I mean, I've seen that whole court down there with three, four inches, you know, and it's.
Yep. Ms. Allard?
Yeah, so Bobby, I just, and thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. We did a, we did a group with Mr. Frankenfield a couple of years ago. I've spent about two years in that area with the ditches and walking the streets and stuff just for that particular reason. And it floods terribly and a lot of that is just lack of maintenance to those ditches and the, and the runoff of those buildings. And evidently, it hasn't been addressed and so probably that might be. Carolyn was probably part of a lot of that, too, as well, when we were working with that neighborhood for a long period of time. And that, it just, it has a tendency to have a terrible, the infrastructure and, and the ditches just don't work properly.
Yeah, there's a graveyard across the street and there's sinkholes and stuff.
I know, I know it is. I've seen it.
Water. My kid almost went right in one and they're pretty deep.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what we can do to work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, just, would the applicant like to come back up and, and butt?
Just a feedback on his concern. Mr. Lewis, your house right in here? This one here or this one here on the right?
It's that one.
That one? Okay. It looks like the ones all the way down here at the end of the court, so you're somewhere right in there. So, under initial investigation to our storm water plan that we were going to have to do with the engineers out there, our initial plan was to use this BNP on the backside of Jensen to drain all our water to. All the water that makes it to that BNP is sheet flow across the concrete, so it's not going in any drainage pipes or anything. There's also a ditch that runs here that pops into another ditch here in the middle and runs and pops out. All of that is essentially at capacity where we cannot go ahead and put more water into it. That being, with his concern here, they've got pipes coming off a slanted roof that comes towards the back of the property. It's never making to the front of the property, the sheet flow into that BNP, which may be one of the big underlying reasons he's getting so much water. But also, I believe all of Beautiful Street is just asphalt with some ditches on it, so there's no underground water transport there. So, as we mentioned, we're going to try to, we're bringing everything out to the Bird Neck side, so the entire property will have to be pitched that way. So, nothing should negatively from what we build go towards the west. We should all be going towards the east.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to open the floor for discussion or to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the application.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. So, I have a approval by Ms. Klein and a second by Ms. Alcaraz. Is there anybody that needs to abstain?
Okay, vote is open. I recorded vote of 11 in favor, zero against. Agenda item, agenda items number five and six have been recommended for approval. Okay, Mr. Chair, our last agenda item for the day is agenda item number eight. Elena Westley, an application for a conditional use permit residential kennel on property located at 4512 White Chapel Court in District Four, formerly the Bayside District. Would the applicant or the representative please step to the podium?
Good morning. My name's Aliana Wesley. Thank you for hearing me today. I was in the informal, I don't know if I can address some of those issues now, but what I'm asking to do isn't to run a kennel or a rescue from my residence, it's to maintain my companion animals that Ms. McKinley had mentioned, the seven that I have. The two that are with me currently for foster through Hope for Life are pending applications, so they are getting ready to be adopted out from my house. The other concern was the netting. When Nextdoor opened up, I reached out to my neighborhoods through Nextdoor and asked what were some of the concerns of the four animals I had at the time. This was back in July of 2020. It was in July of 2020 that the netting went up on my yard. In October, when Animal Control came out, I did have a roommate living with me, so at the time, I was told about a conditional use permit for more than four. And I had the fifth dog being their dog. I asked them to move out shortly after that because of complications, so I didn't pursue the conditional use permit in 2020. I recently left my 16-year career at the shipyard last year and I decided to move forward with rescue aspirations and I have a partner and a business license for training. We are trying to move forward to obtaining a location to run our own rescue, but that is not the purpose of this permit. The purpose of this is just to maintain the companion animals that are at the residence. I know that several people had expressed concerns in my neighborhood regarding the animal's behavior or temperament. And according to Planning Commission, they stated that they would do this with condition of putting up a privacy fence, so I'm in the process of applying for that currently right now to instate a privacy fence around my property. And the dogs in question, I've agreed to staggering when they go out into the backyard so that it's not a pack mentality, it's just individual dogs in the backyard so that they're not all chasing the fence line at the same time. I don't know what else to say right now at this point, but I did bring with me my business plan proposal, as well as my LLC and my degrees in fundamentals behavioral studies for the council members, if you'd like to see them.
Um, I, I don't. Okay, so are there any questions for Ms. Wesley?
You're saying you do have a permit now to get a privacy fence in your whole backyard?
I'm in the process of the application for it. The reason being is there was some sort of misunderstanding. It's a corner lot, so I have to figure out which type of privacy fence I'm permitted to put up.
Okay.
Ms. Klein?
You said four of the dogs are yours and then you have two rescues?
No, ma'am. There's nine dogs currently at the residence.
Okay.
So, there are nine on the property. Two belong to Hope for Life. They are not my dogs, they are just there as fosters because they had temperament issues that needed to be worked on. The other two that are, be out, so then there's three above the allowed four. So, those are the three that I'm asking permission to keep, pretty much, is to have a seven animals. I don't need up to 10, I just want the seven.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Sir Redmond?
Well, you said a lot telling me that you work with Hope for Life. I'm well familiar with Hope for Life Rescue. It's a small. Yeah, it's a superb organization, but it's a small facility. And, you know, I imagine there are some instances where they have animals that probably need a little bit more care than they can in that very enclosed environment that they have. Bless their hearts, money doesn't grow on trees. And, and I think with regard to your application, obviously, that privacy fence is, is an important part of that application. I'm comforted that you're looking at that already because that's going to be a necessity.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
There was one, there's one incident here where you said two of the dogs were unvaccinated.
Yes, so I've since submitted that paperwork to Animal Control for those two animals, those at the time, they weren't unvaccinated because they weren't my animals. I did not have their paperwork onsite. They were Hope for Life's animals. I asked for that to retain files. I do keep a binder with every animal, every vaccination, as well as a separate container for all their medications, compartmentalized per dog, so that they're getting their flea and tick treatment on time, their heartworm on time. I do have Operation Doggy Duty come out twice a week to help with waste removal so that it's done properly. And then I have an agreement with Active Environmental, they come out and treat the yard for me every three months to make sure that there's not an outbreak of fleas at my property.
Yeah, I just was reading through. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have two speakers, Mr. Chairman. Jackie Savage, followed by Jerry Richter.
Please state your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Jackie Savage.
Okay.
And I am a resident of Pembroke Meadows neighborhood. And I would like to address you this afternoon regarding the proposed conditional use permit at 4512 White Chapel Drive. And this permit does state that it would allow up to 10 dogs at the residence. That's how the permit is, was filed on the record. This neighborhood home, these dogs are rescues. And on Nextdoor, which I brought the, the whole printout from Nextdoor Neighbor, she has said that these dogs have all come from rescues and that she is hoping to rehabilitate these unadoptable dogs. Because these dogs were, many of these animals, by her words, were considered to be unadoptable due to being used such as fight dog baits. So that these animals may exhibit aggression and do not belong in a neighborhood setting across the street from a daycare center, a shopping center, a block from an elementary school, two blocks from a neighborhood park and from a neighborhood recreational pool area. Pembroke Meadows is a quiet neighborhood. It was built in the late 60s and early 70s and many of the original residents still live there. Many of the children that grew up there have bought homes and moved back into that neighborhood. It is very family-oriented and child-friendly. And myself, as well as many of the homeowners in Pembroke Meadows, feel that this residential kennel does not have a place in such a neighborhood. This residential kennel does not enhance or bring value to this neighborhood. The companion dogs that she was referring to, and in Nextdoor Neighbor, she said no more than five would she have on her property. Then later on, states seven, currently has nine. So, even though she's telling you that there's only going to be seven dogs there, I don't have faith in what she's saying because she told us on Nextdoor Neighborhood, there would be no more than five. There are currently nine dogs in her home. And now she says seven of them will be companions. The companions are not her companions, but dogs she uses, companion dogs for the dogs that she's training, the unadoptable dogs. This home that has these animals and this family living in it is only 1,463 square feet and it has a small corner lot with a small backyard.
Ms. Savage?
Yes.
I appreciate it, but your time, you have three minutes and I appreciate it.
Okay.
Let you know about the yellow light in the morning.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yes, okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Redmond?
I hate to have to put you through this, but can you take that pointer and show us? We're very pointer challenged here.
Okay.
If you could take that pointer and show us where your house is in relation to this property?
Where my house is in relation to this property?
Yes.
Where's the, oh, how do you use the pointer? My house is over here. You go down Abbey Drive, it turns into Severn and my house is probably about right there.
So, you're not anywhere near this house?
I walk the neighborhood and my husband walks the neighborhood and we take our grandchildren through the neighborhood. I drive by this home every day because this is the main entrance to the neighborhood. This is the daycare center.
I know, I'm, believe me, I'm well familiar with it.
But no, my home is not adjacent to this home. But I drive past it every day, coming and going from my home to leave for work and to come home from work, to go to the grocery store, coming home from the grocery store. Anytime I'm going in or out of the neighborhood, I drive past that home or walk past the home.
Thank you.
I did bring pictures because the pictures in this were not representative of the entire structure. They were only taken from one view and I brought pictures of the other view and I would love to leave them with y'all to look at.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we'll, we'll leave them over here and you can pick them up.
Did anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, are there any other questions for Ms. Savage?
Sorry, we'll have to keep the pictures if she gives them to you or, or make a copy. We can make a copy for you if you need them back.
No, you can keep them.
Keep them, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Okay, our final speaker, Jerry Richter.
We'll leave that picture up right quick. That corner house is the corner house at White Chapel and Pembroke Boulevard. If you're walking in the neighborhood or you're driving in or out to the neighborhood, you're using White Chapel Drive, and you're stopping right here to stop some.
Come on, Jack.
Excuse me, can you use the pointer that's on the podium? If you can use it.
I have permission to use that.
Challenging, challenging thing. There you go.
All right.
Great. Thank you.
This is the exit and entrance for everybody over here on this side of Pembroke Meadows. You have to stop here at the stop sign to let traffic coming up and down Pembroke Boulevard or coming across from the shopping center. This particular yard, if you go back to the picture you had before. No, it actually showed the yard.
Look up there, sorry.
We're getting there. Sorry, thank you for your patience.
Okay, that one, perfect. If you notice, ten dogs, they're big dogs, and they put out approximately two loads of dog waste a day, which is twenty a day, multiplied by seven, that's a hundred and forty loads a week. And she is having someone supposedly coming to pick up twice a week. Doesn't smell too good. There is no grass. There is an above-ground pool. There's also a trampoline. What you're seeing here is the mess that's along White Chapel Drive. This goes along Pembroke Boulevard. These particular weeds, growth, and vines come out and come across the walkway, the sidewalk. It's an eyesore. It's not beautiful right now, and that's winter. It gets worse. It's not a place for a business kennel. And she does want to have that as a business. I commend her for working with the dogs, but really, those dogs are hers. She only has two rescues there. The others are private dogs. The requirement is, of course, you can only have four, and it wasn't until she was caught that we now have, excuse me, that we now have the application for a kennel. A kennel there is not acceptable, and it's, is going to be a business. She's already applied for financing to start a business there. We don't approve this neighbors. Thank you.
All right, yep, are there any? Thank you. Please stay up there. Do you, are there any questions?
The brush, the weeds, it looks like that they're on the common area side of the fence.
Well, this is her property, okay? This is her property, goes back this way.
Sure.
And the sidewalk, which you can't see, is right here. So this comes out and it comes, it goes beyond her property.
So are you saying that they start on her property and then climb over the fence?
Well, they come this way. They have, they have it on her property, but it also comes over the, this is her property. These are all her weeds.
So, because what I, what I'm asking is sometimes when there's a corner property, it abuts to common area, which abuts to the sidewalk.
The easement is, the easement, pretend it's over here, the easement would be over here, except her easement's down this way. This is all her property.
Okay, so they fenced inside the property line?
It's inside her property, yes, yes. And the part that's coming over the fence, that's really her responsibility to maintain, but they don't.
So, Jack, I have a question.
Okay, yeah, Ms. Oliver.
So from the photos, this, this side of where the hedge is or the, what?
Right, uh-huh.
The climbing vines are, that's chain link fence?
Behind that is chain link fence.
So the photos show, just one second, ma'am. The photos show that there's chain link fence in there and that it's not, one of the photos, if you look real close, Robin, you'll see towards the house, it looks like it's chain link fence, and that is not able to be, obviously, she can't screen that.
Right.
Because she can't because of the bush.
Right, right.
The, the climbing vine.
Growth, right.
So, which looks like that's on, faces public sidewalk going into the neighborhood.
Correct, correct.
If I'm correct, so that seems to be.
That has, you know, that's an eyesore. If you look at her property there, and you, I understand with ten large dogs, you're not going to have grass. I mean, she can't have grass, and I understand that. But it becomes, in the rain and the summer and the heat, it becomes poop soup, which is basically the best I can say. I mean, where is all this waste going to go?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Redmond?
Well, number one, she has, it's in this application that she picks it up each time they go outside, and she has a commercial operation that comes.
I think she just stated that somebody coming twice a week.
I didn't interrupt you. So could you take that pointer and show me where your house is as well?
I'm on Abbey Drive. Go around, which is Abbey Drive. I'm right down here.
So you're down there.
But for walking, I'm going to be going to Food Lion. I walk the animals. If I'm going back to the park, I have to go this way to the pool. I go over the school back here. I work at the school also. I'm a volunteer.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other, any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to open it up for, oh, yeah, please come up for, sorry, my apologies.
I do have copies, Robin. I'd like to submit this to draw in the question, the business, in the business plan, which you'll find in the back of that document, we actually have four proposed locations that we're looking to go to. So my house will not be the business. We are proposing different sites that we're looking into currently to apply for the business loan, to get the location, and then to run the operation from that space. As far as the five dogs, the reason why I say that there's seven companion dogs right now, I'm sorry, I can't, is before I adopt these animals out, I make sure that they go to their Canine Good Citizens Award and get that certification to prove that they're, you know, capable of being in any environment. They can walk through, you know, Lowe's, Home Depot, they can walk at the park. They're ready for life outside of just being in a backyard. In regards to Operation Duty, that comes twice a week now, it's because of the winter time that they come twice a week. In the summer, because of the amount of my animals, they do come three times a week. And I also do have a bucket in the backyard that I pick up with regularly to eliminate that. I've never had grass in my backyard since as long as I can remember. I've been living at this residence for thirty-one years. I'm one of the children that Ms. Savage spoke about that ended up buying my parents' house because this is where I wanted to be. In regards to the eyesore that is on the corner, and yes, it is an eyesore, I will admit to that, that bush is overtaken by a wisteria vine, and so I am in the process of cutting that down. It's a long tedious process, but I had to wait for winter for it to happen because in the summertime, it's in full bloom, it's green, you can't cut into it. The animals are not all large. I have, most of them are about thirty-five, forty-five pounds. That's the average of these animals. I do have one that's eighteen pounds, and then I do have one that is up for adoption that's a hundred and thirty-five pounds. So that's the Great Pyrenees. I would like to address any other questions that are in place. My neighbors that I live in, I live in a cul-de-sac, and all five of my neighbors have signed that they're favorable for me moving forward, keeping the companion animals.
Just, one more question. The fence in the area you're going to replace, are you going to replace the fence, the metal fence going against the sidewalk?
So I am actually going to be replacing all sides of my fencing, including the gate, so.
Well, that's going to have to come down before you replace the fence anyway.
Yes, and I'm in the process of cutting that down. I've gotten several quotes, and I understand what they're saying, you know, I can sit here and tell you all day, but there's actually processes in place. The pool's actually been drained and is coming down this weekend. And then as far as the bush and the shrubbery goes, we're going to be cutting most of that down. The wooden privacy fence, because the city actually cuts the fence, the bush that's on the street side, and they cut it off of the sidewalk. But in the backyard, there's about a foot gap between the bush in my backyard and then the chain link fence. So that's where the privacy fence will be put up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Bobby.
Bobby.
Oh.
If I can, Mr. Wall. Mr. Reiner, to the point, the fence keeps coming up as a concern. Please note that condition number four requires the fence to be, the existing chain link fence to be replaced with a six-foot privacy fence.
Yes, I agree. Okay. Yes, Ms. Quine.
This might be for the staff. Given the conditions for this permit, who then is the authorizing body that will confirm that this was done in order to move forward?
It's, it is the condition of the conditional use permit, which will be inspected by zoning, by our zoning inspectors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm still trying to just get a hold, how many of the nine dogs do you own that are, that are just your personal dogs?
Five. There are five that are my personal dogs, that my name is on their rabies tag registration. Two are pending adoption through Hope for Life, and then two are in the process of finalizing their.
That's how you get to the nine, those two?
Yes, yes, sir. And then the two that are finishing up their Canine Good Citizens test, and then they'll be available for adoption.
So you really only have room for five other dogs because you're keeping the five you have?
I'm keeping five, but I have no intention of bringing more animals to the property. That's the reason.
You know, your conditional use permit says ten. That's, that's.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And I'm not, I mean, that's, I don't have a problem with ten or nine. I just, you're keeping the five, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, and on there, I can point to which five, if you want to see them, but this, I am planning on keeping the five. And then the two would be where if I needed to train another dog, I could train the dog overnight and then return it to the facility.
One, one thing is your, your operation, that you're, the rescue that you're planning to operate as a business, would, would those dogs, like, let's say, you know, you currently have nine, you have this four pending or in the new training process, new pipeline, would those, if you had your business in an offsite location, would those four be at that location or would they?
The four that are ready for adoption, they would be at the facility so that they're getting the most exposure and so that they're getting the more hands-on versus just at the home. They wouldn't be staying at the residence when I'm not there.
Okay, so you would have your, you'd only have your domestic companion dogs that hit your property?
Yes.
After you have your business or?
Yes, and the animals that I do have, yes, they are all rescue in one form or another. And it's not that they weren't adoptable, it's that their temperament was not favorable for a typical person to just walk in on the street and handle an animal that they're not prepared to handle.
Ms. Oliver.
So you, it looks like you're, you're looking to relocate your business.
Yes, ma'am.
To a more favorable.
Yes, the business, and that's why I said the animals that are there will not exceed that, like, I won't, like, adopt out the four and then bring in four more to my property. By that point, we're hoping to have a facility where the business will actually be operated.
Out of the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
With that, though, Mr. DeHaan, there's a city ordinance that you can only have four dogs.
Correct. She would still need the conditional use permit to have five.
For the five.
Yes, ma'am.
Hearing, hearing this additional information about what is happening with the, with the other dogs and them leaving and the potential move, or the intention to move the business, there is a condition that we would normally have put that says as they, as the dogs leave, you can't bring dogs back to replace it. And if the commission would want that condition, and instead, that, that would be one I would recommend if I knew this information earlier, so.
I would, I would recommend that we would put that in, and that would probably make the neighborhood a little less disgruntled, maybe, so.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Why?
Well, number one, because I don't, it's, let's, can we just deal with the application that we have at present, not about a future location of business? This is a conditional use permit for the kennel because she's got more than four dogs. It's not that hard. So I wouldn't, let's, I think it'd be wonderful if you could get this established in another location. Two years down the road, if you're not, then what we're doing today is really going to still be that important, okay?
Well, it's only what if. It's a, it's a what-if condition. If she moves.
Let's deal with, let's deal with the application today and not worry about our crystal balls, is kind of my view.
But one thing is.
Can I finish? Please, can anybody let me just finish?
Sure.
So the, go over again. I failed to understand what the relevance of the state of your bushes or the state of your backyard is to the appropriateness of this application. The city maintains what?
So the side that you're seeing, White Chapel Drive, I actually live in White Chapel Court, but the street side that's White Chapel Drive headed towards Pembroke Boulevard.
I was in front of your house this morning.
Yes, so that, that street, the city cuts that bush. As soon as it hits sidewalk, they cut it. That's, no, that's not, you know, long-term goal by any means. And I was just addressing the bush issue because clearly there's neighborhood concern that it's an eyesore. But as far as the kennel license or the permit or the care and maintenance of these animals and their behavioral progress, it's a bush that they like running through. I'm sorry.
Bushes, no, I have no problem with bushes in your yard. They have nothing to do with that.
Apparently.
I don't.
The, I commend you for what you're doing. And I agree with your characterization that there are some animals that are not in shape to necessarily be adopted right away, and they need additional care. And you're providing that care. So in my view, you're doing Lord's work, you know, with regard to these animals. You fill a gap that's not easily done in other places, and it has to be done, or they're going to be in far worse shape than, than they would be today, so I'm ready to get on with this.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to close and open, open for discussion or for motion. Ms. Wesley?
About two months ago, a month ago, we were, we were wrestling with a residential kennel in the, in the country. People had twenty acres, and we didn't want them to have the twenty dogs. And there we got a quarter of acre lot or something like that, and, you know, people want ten dogs. And, you know, where is the balance here? I mean, it just looks to me like there's a little bit of overload here. And I appreciate what she's doing, but, I mean, I think we're overloading. It's in a, it's in a tight-knit community. There, that twenty-dog deal was in a, like I said, twenty-acre parcel in a little small development. And it just looks like to me it's a little bit overload. I appreciate what she's doing, but I just think her profit is a little bit concise to, to do something. And if you, and if says it's, you know, she just wants to keep her five dogs, but if we approve a ten, if we approve a conditional use permit for ten dogs, that stays with that property. So if she decides to sell her property, the next person to come in, they can have ten dogs. And because that stays there. Am I right, am I right, Bobby? Isn't that true? So, you know, I just think, you know, and I appreciate what she's doing, but I think it's a little bit overload here for, for this. I don't, I don't think I can support the application.
Mr. Redmond?
Well, I disagree. I was, I was there this morning. All of her neighbors support the application. But look at that, and all those little blue stars on that graphic show that all her neighbors support the application. Now, folks, four blocks away, do not, and I'm not particularly concerned about that. If you drive your car past the house on the way to Food Lion, I don't know that that's going to be a big impact. So what I have not read, that's what I'm talking about, all of her neighbors were there. And I was in this court this morning, and the children were walking from those adjacent houses up the block, just across to the corner where Professional Circle meets White Chapel Drive to wait for the bus. I didn't see any great alarm. There were kids with their, there were parents with their children. I was actually kind of sad because I don't have one that's that tall and waiting at the bus, but that's a different story. Anyway, and it seemed like a perfectly normal residential block to me. I'm unaware of any kind of incident that's evolved, that's, that's occurred with her dog. It seems to me she's getting picked on, very frankly. I don't understand, very frankly, why the folks who are in most, in closest proximity wouldn't be most familiar with her situation. So I don't care what her backyard is like. I don't care what her bushes are like. And off of bushes and backyards, the application itself to me seems pretty simple, and I think we should stick to that. Too often we stray. She's working with an organization that's entirely respectable and very, very highly respected. respected. So, I mean, if all those blue stars were red stars, I'd be concerned, and I was this morning, um, before I went over there. That would make a difference. That seems to me to be very strong support for her. Uh, her fence is gonna be a privacy fence on all sides. Enough about the fence, enough about the drape, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't matter, I mean, we can, we can see that. I, I just, I fail to see what the impact would be of dogs that are inside her house or her yard. I mean, I'm unaware of any conflict yet, and all of her neighbors support it. That's what tells me, that's what tells me that this is okay. I don't know what better to go on than the fact that the folks in closest proximity support her. And absent some sort of horror story, of which I'm unaware, unless you're upset when you're driving your car on the way to Food Lion, then I don't understand what the challenge would be. It seems to me much simpler than we should spend an hour on.
Okay.
So, I certainly am gonna support it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's hear who's first, first, Ms. Klein first, and then I'll get to you.
So I have had, you know, different change of feelings since we talked about it this morning. Um, I will say I have two pitfalls who are discriminated against, and I take them to training, and they'll never pass a Canine Citizen test. So if you're able to get these dogs to do that, bless you. My issue is more that the, um, department runs with the land, and ten dogs is a lot of do, nine dogs, seven dogs, five dogs, it's a lot of dogs for that property. So I would be more willing to support the application if it included a provision that as dogs leave the property, they can't bring anymore, so that ultimately, when the house is sold, we're back to the four-dog limit. That's all.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Graham?
Um, can I, can I ask staff about how that would be worded, real quick?
I'm sure, yeah.
I just wanted to see how that could be worded, or how does that be?
We, we have a condition that we've applied to other residential kennels that's similar to that, and, uh, we can, I, I have the wording here, uh, that I can provide after discussion as necessary.
Okay, all right. Ms. Graham?
Yeah, and the, the current state of this application, I mean, and I love dogs, I have two dogs, um, that's a lot of dogs for a small property. Um, whether it's fi, I mean, five dogs is a lot of dogs for that property. Seven dogs, ten dogs, I, I just, I can't support it, it's just too many. And it runs with the land, and unless we can change it, I mean, I, I will not support it.
Thank you. Mr. Peddly?
I, I appreciate Mr. Horsley bringing up the kennel issue from a month or two ago, because that was in my district as, as well, and, you know, I went down there two or three times and looked at it, and I've been kinda struggling with this one, um, because I think it is a very small property. Interestingly, it's kinda isolated in the scheme of things, um, and I do recognize what Mr. Redmond said, that was starting to tip the balance when I was reading the report, that the neighborhood, uh, immediate neighborhood supports it. But I like what, um, um, Mr. Tahan and Ms. Klein was just talking about. I think I could get there if this does not run with the property forever, if we can word this in a way that, um, and I think the, the applicant was okay with that, when, when it was asked. So, I, I'd like to see something that allows this just to, um, as the dogs go away, that the, the number goes down.
So, I, I'll make a motion, if nobody else, unless, do you have something to say?
Any, well, anybody else before we make a motion?
Well, I think that her goal is to take the business out of the residence, and so if we can-
Bobby, could you let it, could you?
Do that.
I'd like to hear that.
It's just, who, who makes the decision of when the, I mean, how to-
Never heard of him before.
What? Go ahead.
Use permit going away.
The use permit's not going away, it's just, it's gonna-
Well, then-
It's, go ahead, we'd, we'd like to hear it.
Sir, the condition would replace condition one based on just the conversation that I'm hearing. Uh, the condition that we've used prior, it would read, um, "This conditional use permit shall be limited to a maximum of ten adult dogs. At any such time, if any of the dogs covered by this conditional use permit are removed from this property for any reason, no other dogs of any kind, gender, age, or breed shall be permitted on the property to replace the dogs. The applicant may keep up to four dogs as allowed by the zoning ordinance without a conditional use permit."
But then if she changes her mind, then, then it doesn't work.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
So removed from the property, is that the?
That's the language that we've used previously.
Okay, so this has been, this has been done before, is that?
Correct.
Okay, so it seems fairly atypical, um, in terms of the, but, I would, I would be okay with that. I mean, I, I see the mitigating, you know, we've got some mitigating things with the fence, with, with the dog-
There's mitigating things with the fence, and the fence is there, is gonna be there.
It's going to be there, well, that's, and that's-
Part of the application.
Mm-hmm. But I, I also feel that there's, there's a reason for, um, for the ordinance, and it's there for, for a reason. And, um, you know, it's to limit, you know, the, the large amount of dogs that, you know, people can hold in, in a residential area.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'd, I'd be in favor with the condition that as, as the dogs leave the property, then, then no additional dogs would be.
She's got nine. So my question is, she has nine dogs, only two are adopted out? Four? Is that a definite four?
Yeah.
Yes.
My issue is that if we say she can't have, we say no, then there's five dogs that she has to rehome, and these aren't like sweet little golden doodles, like, these are dogs that-
Five of them are hers.
Well, sure, but if, I'm saying if we say that she can't have the, the li, the permit, she's then tasked with rehoming five of the dogs.
Right.
That aren't easily rehomed. But if we say that as the dogs are adopted out, they cannot be replaced, that brings it back to the ordinance whenever she ends up with four dogs.
Right, no, I understand that, I just-
I mean, the ordinance was in place before she got the five extra dogs.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, it's always been that.
Yeah, right, right.
It's just the timing of how long it takes her to do it.
Do you make a motion?
Okay. I mean, I, I, do we have a motion?
Robin made, Robin.
Can we, would anybody care to consult the applicant here? I mean, I think that would be-
She said she would be, you would be good with that? Yeah, come on up. Ms. Wesley.
Pointed experts.
What's the additional question, sorry?
So if we were to word the permit, so that you are permitted a commercial kennel with a maximum of ten dogs-
It's not a commercial kennel, it's a res-
A residential kennel, thank you, with a maximum of ten dogs. However, as dogs are adopted out, they may not be replaced.
Right.
And so then, until you have the residential ordinance limit of four dogs.
I, yes, I'll, I, I don't have a problem agreeing to those conditions, um, but as I was stating, there's four, so there's five, so I would still need the conditional permit for that fifth dog.
Well, you would have it.
Okay, okay.
If at one point the dog dies, like, you give it away, whatever, and you're left with four dogs in your home, you wouldn't be able to add additional dogs up at that point, but it covers you in the interim.
In the interim, I, I just wanna do what's best for these animals, and I, I do need the time to work with some of them. I, so I wanna do whatever's going to be favorable for these animals. If that's agreeing to those conditions, I'll agree to those conditions.
But then just to clarify, two of them are already pending adoption.
Two of them are pending adoptions, yes, ma'am. Um, we're waiting on heartworm results for one of them, um, because they said they will not take a heartworm-positive dog. I can't control other people. And then the other dog is, um, pending a home visit, so that's where they'll go to their home, and then they'll have two weeks to decide if this is a good fit for them or not.
Okay. Okay. Oh, yeah, Ms. Rocker.
Just one question, so during adoption, are they ever returned, because they can't handle them?
That happens about seventy-six percent of the time with animals, because they move and they can't take their animals, or they, um, their behavioral issues were too great, which is why we try and limit that by ensuring they have that Canine Good Citizens before they go out for adoption. Last year alone, um, I helped assist in forty-eight adoptions, and two of which were returned.
So seventy-six percent are returned?
On average.
So what would you, so you can't bring them back?
By that point, um, in the business plan itself, there's gonna be a condition for how soon they can be returned. You have a timeframe, you have a three-month timeframe, um, because typically with rescue dogs, you wanna do a three-three-three principle, three days to decompress, three weeks.
So she's offering you, you can't ret, you can't-
So after they're adopted out, I understand that, I would have to then work with Hope for Life and find new placement for them at that point. By that time, if we get to that, I'm hoping to have my own location so that I can accept the animals back.
As long as you're aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I would like to make a motion, uh, to approve the residential kennel permit with modification of condition one. Bobby, will you read that for me, please?
That, "Condition one will be changed to 'This conditional use permit shall be limited to a maximum of ten adult dogs. At any such time, if any of the dogs covered by this conditional use permit are removed from this property for any reason, no other dogs of any kind, gender, age, or breed shall be permitted on the property to replace the dogs. The applicant may keep up to four dogs as allowed by the zoning ordinance without a conditional use permit."
Without a conditional use permit?
Yes, you're permitted to have up to four without a-
Right, no, I just, so does the conditional-
It lingers on if she has five. Until she only has four, and then it's gone.
And then it, and then it goes away, okay, just-
I'll second. Okay, so we have a, um, uh, motion by Ms. Klein and a, a second by Mr. Weiner for, uh, for approval, with amended condition number one.
Vote is open.
No, excuse me.
Uh, and are there anybody with, um?
Yeah, I would, I'm, I'm gonna oppose this, and I wanna make clear this, because I think it's overly restricted.
Okay.